Well, gentlemen and ladies, it's 6:30. I'd like to call this meeting to order. Rule call.
Come on, Brian, help him out.
It's not because I think they're gonna do it.
Oh, alright, alright. Okay, well, bye. Mr. Schmidt, here. I am here. Mr. Mahan.
Here.
Mr. Meesey, here. Mr. Hues, there.
Present.
Okay, we call it order at this time. Pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Do we have a virtue card reading this evening?
I do. Tonight's virtue is contentment. Contentment is an awareness of sufficiency, a sense that we have enough and we are enough. It is appreciating the simple gifts of life: friendship, books, a good laugh, a moment of beauty, a cool drink on a hot day. Being contented, we are free from the pull of greed and longing. We trust that life provides what we need when we need it. Contentment allows us to experience satisfaction with what is. We are fully present in this moment. Being contented does not obstruct our dreams or thwart our purpose. It is a place to stand and view the future with a peaceful heart and a gratitude for all that is and all that is to come. Life came up to me shouting, showing me, life came up to me showing me that a contented mind is best for growth. The practice of contentment. I allow myself to be satisfied and grateful. I trust that I am enough. I enjoy where I am and what I have. I resist the craving for more. I am fully alive to the present moment. I relax in the trust that life is good. I'm thankful for contentment. It shows me that life is a gift.
Wow.
Thank you.
That's a good one, yes. Our school Board of Education guidelines. With an open mind, we will establish an atmosphere that allows expression of all views, even when views are not in line with all members. Being respectful of time, we will work collaboratively with the district administrator by having open and honest conversations around district priorities. We will work collaboratively with all stakeholders to monitor key indicators so that equitable teaching and key indicators so that equitable teaching results in high achievement. We will work toward building a trusting environment where both students and staff can reach their full potential and celebrate successes in academics, the arts, and athletics. Okay. At this time, I'd like to go from the floor to public comments. Quiet, quiet crowd. First of all, I'd like to thank Doug Huestead for his service as president of the Nacousses School Board of Education. We just had a reorganization meeting and I was elected to fill his shoes and it's gonna be a challenge to fill those shoes. Doug, I want to thank you personally for the time and effort you put in to be the board president and I hope I can keep it up. Tonight, we have a student-staff presentation.
And it appears that.
Here we go.
Okay.
The tech ad, that's on me. I have to follow up with them. This is really, whatever it is in my head.
Sure. Well, we'll be looking.
That one is on me, but it was going to be great.
We're gonna be looking, I'm looking forward to it. I really am.
And I'm not sure what happened with Mike.
Okay.
But we have Emma.
We have Emma and I, you know, I look forward to appearing for one of the groups at a later date. That'd be fantastic. At this time, Emma, the floor is yours.
Alright, so. We're kind of at that stage of wrapping up things a little bit. We've got sports wrapping up. We just completed a lot of our last concerts for the year. We still have one more choir concert coming up at the high school, but felt like everything, the last month has been pretty successful. We had good prom and all of our events have been going well. One thing that we did recently with National Honor Society was go over to Bike rodeo and I thought that was a really cool event. It's something that I remember from elementary school and just, I thought it was really cool that that's still something that's going on and that we got to be a part of. And, yeah, we're getting ready for graduation, the fourth at two, so.
And you're graduating and this is your last board?
Yeah.
Any reflections upon your service here as a representative?
I think I've really been interested in seeing how all this works and it's been really cool to just see how much everyone cares about making sure that our schools are, be the best that they can be. So, I've really enjoyed coming here and just getting to see the workings of it all.
Thank you very much for your service.
Thank you.
Yeah, thanks, Emma.
Hard to fill your shoes as well. Fantastic, well, we're gonna be moving on then to why I serve on the Board of Education. This month, we're gonna be having Dave Schmidt talk about why he serves and he's also gonna talk about some of the things that made him wanna serve on the Board of Education.
Alright. I'm just entering my last year of my third term and I thank the good voters of the school district of Nacousses for electing me three times and putting your faith in me. Each year, when I ran for election, I ran on the idea that if I could get on the board, I could help my grandchildren, which are many that are in the school district, to get a better education. And by doing so, I would accomplish the fact of helping all the students, all thirteen hundred almost of our students, also get a better education. I think I've accomplished some of those goals through the years that I've been here. I was very successful in helping to implement the STEM Academy, which is a positive group in our schools now, was involved with the rest of the board members here in getting our buildings remodeled for the last several years so that we have excellent facilities for our teachers to work and for our students to learn. And I'm sure that they appreciated the air conditioning today as it was a nice warm day. I talked with several teachers today and they were very happy to have the air conditioning on. So, basically, I'm on the board because I wanna help the kids to get a better education so that they're prepared to go out into the world, whether it be for higher education or for the workforce. And to this point, I think I've done a pretty good job. I hope that voters agree with me on that. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thanks very much.
At this time, we're gonna move on with communications with the board while we nine. Administrative reports, and one night, I believe you're first.
My first item is the 2017-18 School Nutrition Program Breakfast-Lunch Prices. Every year, it comes to the board at this time to talk about setting the prices for 17-18. Back in 2010, Michelle Obama implemented the Healthy, Hunger-Free Kids Act of 2010, which basically requires school districts participating in the school lunch program to provide the same level of support for lunches served to students who are not eligible for free-induced lunches as they are for lunches served to students eligible for free-induced lunches. God bless you.
Thank you.
There are four main reasons. Typically, the three main sources of funds for school nutrition was federal, state, and local and that is never enough to make whole a school nutrition program. And typically, the average prices charged for paid lunches in school districts are less than the cost of reducing those lunches. Pricing paid lunches costs below the cost of production effectively increases federal subsidies for higher-income children and then the gap just grows. And the provision for help, will help the school nutrition program be able to fund the school nutrition program. So, the USDA has created a complex formula that you have to complete every year and it asks you what, how many lunches you served last year, what you're charging last year, which is meaning sixteen, seventeen, because we're talking about 17-18. And they put it into this big formula and it pops out how much you should be charging per lunch. And if you're not charging that, you have to increase it to that price in ten cent increments. So, you can't go above a ten cent increment. So, I completed the huge spreadsheet and what happened was is that we are recommending that the prices increase by ten cents. So, currently, the breakfast prices will stay the same. I mean, I'm not recommending any change for the breakfast prices. So, the lunch program currently for a student K.3, $2.55. We are proposing $2.65. Student for eight, it's currently $2.75. We're recommending $2.85. Student nine twelve, we're currently $2.95. We're recommending $3.05. An adult and elderly, they're currently at $3.60. We're recommending $3.70. The reduced lunch prices will remain at forty cents per meal and we will, as always, review the à la carte items and reflect any price increases from our suppliers. So, administration is recommending approval of the 17-18 school lunch prices reflecting a ten cent increase over the prior year price and breakfast prices will remain the same as prior year.
I'll make a motion to accept the, to approve the 2017-18 school lunches reflecting the ten percent increase over the prior year and for the breakfast prices to remain the same.
Okay, we have a motion in a second. All those in favor signify by aye.
Aye.
May. Motion passed. Okay. Preliminary budget.
Typically, at this time, we try and approve a preliminary budget to approve spending beginning on July 1st. So, this typically is brought to you in June and I won't be out of state in June, so I won't be attending the board meeting in June. So, I thought we would bring it by in May. There you have a couple of handouts. We have a memo. We have a preliminary budget spreadsheet. We have a nice colorful spreadsheet with graphs on it and then the actual budget. So, I'm gonna be talking about the summary sheet. So, back in February, at the February 21st board meeting, we presented the forecast model, which reflected an in-the-red budget of $126,228. So, I thought I would start there. That way, you could see how we current, how, when I first presented it back in February and where we are today. Obviously, the numbers are completely wrong because we only know less than two percent of what we're supposed to know before July, before July 1st or before the budget or the school year starts. We won't have all the numbers until October 15th. That's when we have the annual meeting and that's when we pass the final budget. But in order to begin spending for July 1st, we have to basically approve a preliminary budget. So, back in February, we presented the model and it was in the red by $126,228. So, what happens since then? Well, as an admin team, we were looking at staffing and it was very difficult to look at staffing when we knew some people were going to be leaving and we've already hired some people as well. So, when I say trued up staff from sixteen, seventeen, that's what I did. I took out all of those people out of the model that we knew were gonna leave and I put all those people back in that I knew were gonna stay and were just hired. So, that totaled amount, $143,972, to the good. We reduced the health insurance premium increase to two percent. It was originally estimated at five percent. Actually, we just had the two insurance meetings with our staff and they went great. I mean, it was a really, a good meeting. So, instead of reflecting the five percent, which is too high, the average of all three plans that we're offering is about a two percent increase. Could be lower, could be a tick higher. Not too bad. We increased the dental insurance premium to five percent. We originally estimated zero percent. In February, we didn't know what the increase was. We have since found out that it was five percent. And as you can see, this is Fund X only. It's not representing all the funds. It's only a $2,300 increase, so. I also updated the energy efficiency savings, which only affects the debt service, so it really doesn't affect the operating funds. I originally estimated it at $75,000 and I think it's averaging probably about $45,000. So, but that does not affect Fund X balance. So, when you add up all of those changes, we get a subtotal of, in the black, of $122,954. And as you can see on this colorful chart, in Fund X in 17-18, it says $122,954. So, what I presented in this summary matches what is in the model today. But, we know that that's not right because there are other positions that we have to hire yet. So, the positions that are not in the model is the psychologist. I estimated about $73,300. Now, I know that we hired somebody for that position, but when you put somebody in the model, it affects about twenty-five accounts. So, in order to, it takes a lot of time to update the model. The AMS special ed teacher, the AMS fifth grade teacher, the NHS special ed teacher are all open positions that are not reflected in this model yet. So, that total is $223,900. When you subtract it from the $122,954 in the black, we are now in the red by $100,946. But, there are some reductions that aren't in the model yet either. So, the CWSA movement, there's one position that's gonna be eliminated. $50,200 estimated savings. Special ed support staff, NHS part-time. Special ed support staff, NHS full-time. Special ed support staff, AMS part-time. And teacher, HES full-time. All of those reductions are not reflected in the model yet. So, that, those total about $165,200. So, you offset that against the $100,946 in the red and we are basically estimated in the black by $64,254. So, there's a lot of moving pieces and I think when we had our workshop, we talked about the staffing and you could see all the moving pieces that are happening with staffing. And if one change doesn't happen, it's a domino effect and it affects everything. So, rather than put all of these positions or take these positions out of the model and have one position changed and redo all that work again, it's easier to estimate and keep a running total then. Does that make sense? Okay. So, basically, that's how we're, that's how we're looking at the model and that's basically what I'm presenting. I am presenting a preliminary budget in the black of $122,954, knowing that we have open positions that are not in the model and reductions that are not in the model. So, the actual preliminary budget is reflective of the $122,954 in the black. The memo indicates that the general fund exceeds, the, general fund revenues exceed the expenditures by $122,954 and again, we talked about that. Debt service funds, the expenses exceed the revenues in the debt service fund by $12,250 and we always have that little difference because the district budget's on a fiscal year, but we levy on a calendar year, so there's always a small difference there. And the community service fund, the expenses exceed the revenues in the community service fund by $6,441 and we will be utilizing carryover funds or basically fund balance out of the community service fund. So, that's kind of how I presented my budget. Does anybody have any questions with the preliminary budget? This is all very, very estimated. There's not a lot known right now.
Can you start from the beginning?
Yes. So, actually, administration is recommending the school board approve the 17-18 preliminary budget. Final approval of the budget will be questioned in October after enrollment, funding, and other variables are known.
I will make a motion to approve the 2017-18 preliminary budget as presented. Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Next up. Revised budget, 2016, 2017.
Okay, so we talked about next year. Now, we're gonna go back to this year. If we have a revised budget, if there have been revisions in the 16-17 budget, the board must approve those revisions prior to June 30th. Why do we have revisions? Typically, around this time, I look through all of the budgets and determine if we are in line or not. Actually, I do not throughout the year. I specifically looked at the building budgets and I noticed that there were some areas where maybe they spent more in the support area than they did in the instruction and so I had to do some little budget transfers. The budget transfers that I did within the buildings all equated from a, for $558, transfer from instruction to support services. So, that's pretty darn close. But even though it's different, I have to bring it to the board for approval. So, once, or if the board approves this revised budget, I will then send it to the paper, which it has to be posted and then we can move on. So, I am requesting approval of the 16-17 revised budget.
One more. Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion passed. Thank you very much for your time. Okay, we're gonna talk about our new website, CMS for Schools, and this is gonna be effective 7/1/2017.
Yes, back in, oh, probably about a year and a half ago, I went to a national conference and I went to a session about websites and I realized how poor our website was. So, when I came back, I mentioned the idea and Diana ran with it. So, we met with CMS for Schools probably dozens of times. We actually had all of the staff that is gonna have a page on the website, like Clint met with them, Keith met with them, John met with them, Nathan met with them. We wanted everybody's ideas into this website. Brian met with them. It used to be where anybody, for our old website, the only person that would be updating it is Diana and that's a lot of work. So, now, we have kind of spread that work across the district where in the high school, Deanna will be updating the website, the portion of the high school. So, Diana's just gonna kind of walk you through our new website and kind of give you a preview of it. Okay, are you ready? Here it comes. Already, it looks better, doesn't it?
Nice, new, up-to-date pictures.
Their brand new, yeah. Yeah, nice pictures. You have no idea how hard it was to pick those colors.
And so then down here, we have a place that, for announcements with live links and then further down, we have district news and join our team for employment. And then we have this calendar, which is live and our current website, the calendar, was never made live. So, you can click on the dates to see what's happening and you go right to our school. Otherwise, you can see right below the calendar that there's the upcoming events listed right here.
Perfect.
Facebook and Twitter. You'll see a picture of Keith on the Twitter.
Really? Mad, mad.
These links up here are nice too because you'll be able to click here and see the lunch menus. This one will take you to Power Schools for the parent access. Here's our staff directory. And when we look at our staff directory, I'm just clicking on everyone. We've got them all in here with their websites and emails if they have a class website. And then we have, the staff access tab will be passworded so they have to enter a password. And then we have our employment link, which is so nice because it goes right to WeCan and shows our jobs that are available. So, the really nice part of this is the mapping that you can see under district. You can see all the different pages right from here. I think in our current website, it's kind of hard to navigate. So, if we're looking at the district board meetings, the agendas are right out here already. Under prospective families, I don't know how much you wanna see about this, but.
Is there still a link to, like, the Lunch Money and stuff like that?
Yes, yep, there's quite a few links throughout this site that goes to e-funds. But, um. Under, if we go to prospective families and look at, let's see, I had some. What's special about Nacousses? Another cool thing about this website is you can go up to the language and change it. So, the whole website will be in a different language where non-English speaking people. The school sites are so nice. They're mapped out so you can see what, you can see in each school. Here's the elementary school. We have one, one picture on the top that doesn't change, but then down at the bottom, each site has a slideshow and we have some really nice up-to-date pictures.
Nice.
Which changes. There they go. There we go. So, back to the map. Family resources.
There's that fees and payments, right?
Yeah, fees and payments are right there.
That'll be for e-funds, right?
Yep. Yep, and then we have the virtual online. The new student registration is now gonna be changed so it's all online, so we won't have any papers and that'll be for reregistration too.
That's exciting.
We'll be able to go in and, and then we have a lot of community links, which we're not totally done with this. We have until July 1st, so, but the community links is kind of nice. We're linked to the school forest and. So, we have work to do, but it looks much better than the other one.
And our goal is to create a video tour of our schools as well for the prospective families so they can see inside of our schools with just, with a click of button. So, yeah, we're working with our photographer on that.
Isn't that something?
And I have to, I have to give Diana credit because she worked really hard on this and she kept everything going. So, this is all her.
Way to go, Diana.
Yep, yep. Hooray!
Thank you.
So, this will be up the 1st of July, is that right?
Yes.
So, currently, you can't use it?
Nope. That was your preview.
You got a taste for it, didn't you?
Just keep selling it.
That is.
The old one was so hard to pull.
Thank you very much. Looking forward to that. Well, now, moving on to operational expectations. One thing I would like to mention before we jump into this is just to thank all the teachers and that participated in listening sessions that we held. Last week, we had a good group attend and we had some feedback. And Doug and I summarized the discussions and we've shared those with a fellow board members as well as Terry. And we've seen work, work's already being done on the comments you made. So, I just want to personally thank everybody that showed up to that meeting and how much we value that time and that effort. We thank you very much. And now, turn it over to Terry.
Yes. So, in looking at OE9, OE9, communicating with the board, certainly, we've had this out in front of us and we had the workshop last week and we're talking about the new process that we use. And just to remind everybody, the Tuesday before the board meeting in June, we're going to be getting out information on any policy governance monitoring tools. And then the Thursday of that same week, the Thursday before the board meeting in June, we're gonna start this in June, we'll have a workshop, an hour-long workshop. And we had talked today, Nathan, Brian and I, about helping develop some sort of tool so when we do come to those meetings that we can work right through a process in really making sense of the monitoring tool. So, we'll be working on that. So, what we want to do, we're talking about OE9 tonight and OE5. OE9 is communicating with the board and OE5 is the learning environment treatment of students. And certainly, OE9 is pretty complete from our perspective. We certainly are open to any comments, suggestions. But OE5, we want to. Uh, we certainly are open to any, uh, comments, suggestions, but OE five, we want to, uh, move that, I'm suggesting that we move that to June, and I wanna talk a little bit about what that can look like. So, would you like to take care of OE nine first?
Yeah, yep. Um, the question we have before us is this, if we find, if the board finds itself to be in compliance with policy OE nine, um, again, this is subject to the workshop meeting that we had last week, um, or workshop, um, at this point, uh, all those that feel that were in compliance with OE nine, please do, if you do, we'll call on, or are there any exceptions you wanna know about policy OE nine?
Why don't I read the policy statement while board members are looking? So, the policy, policy statement for OE nine, communicating with the board, states that annually, "The board shall assure that they are fully and adequately informed about matters relating to board work and significant district concerns."
Any questions, yeah?
I know one thing that we talked about in our workshop was the whole fact of, when we do have a listening session, and get this stuff like this, is that we, we don't just sit on it, that we have to act on it, and that I feel is, you know, I mean, we've gotten, you know, I got the, you know, the letter, the update from you guys, and that's, that's great, and, you know, with us not being there, sometimes it's hard, for those that weren't there, to see, okay, well, what are, how are we gonna act on this? And I think that's one thing that we, I'd like to see that we do, um, after we have a listening session, is that we set some time aside to discuss, okay, where, where do we go from here? What's the next step?
Absolutely.
So, can I talk a little bit about, can I, so, uh, we certainly, as an administrative team, looked at that information this morning, and, uh, what I proposed to the administrative team was to turn that into a table. So, we've got all the comments that were made, and then we really went down the, the, the list and talked about some of the things that, you know, we're currently doing. Uh, Mr. Rogers is doing a follow-up to provide some clarification and seek more understanding in one area. Certainly, you know, we're looking at guest teachers, there was a lot about subs and guest teachers, and so we're studying, and certainly looking at those topics. Uh, you know, professional development was brought up, salaries are, were brought up. So, they're, they're being addressed, and certainly, we'd be happy to create a table and share with the board, you know, responses to those things. What we don't know is, how do we communicate that back to the, the, the district? Because certainly, there's some things in there that we're, we've been working on. You know, we know, we've been working on guest teachers for three years, but it's happening across the state, right? That doesn't mean that we don't keep trying, we, we continue to look, but, I mean, short of busing in teachers from, you know, another state or something, I, I don't know how we can just make sure that we've...
Well, I just, I just wanna be, be sure that...
Yeah.
That it is being acted upon, and that we're not just...
Right.
Sweeping it under the rug, and, you know, yeah, we listen to you.
And as a member, as a member of the listening session, you know, I have that, I feel that same way.
Okay.
Even in...
Right.
And, you know, again, how do we communicate that, and how do, how do our, how does our staff know what we're working on? Maybe it could be a subject of the monthly meeting, the staff meeting, where that, you know, I'll come through a listening session, brought up these subjects with the staff, and just wanna let you know what we're working on.
Sure.
Might that be an easier way to communicate?
Yeah, we can, we'll look at some options, yeah.
Yeah, but I, I know from past experience and, and doing the same kind of summary, that it was followed up on, you know, the, the themes that were raised, and...
But we, it, which is as important for us.
Yeah.
You know, as an admin team, yeah.
Right, that's what...
But, yeah, what we'll do is, you know, just for accountability purposes, we'll document...
And get, and get it back.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay. And I think that that is covered in this, you know, that, that type of communication. Good, thank you. Any other questions or possible concerns? Shall we find ourselves in compliance with policy OE nine? That's, uh, a motion.
One second.
Mr. Schmidt?
Yes.
Yes. Mr. Heezy?
Yes.
Mr. Heeze, there.
Yes.
Very good. Um, OE five, we're gonna move on to the June meeting.
Yeah. So, could I talk just a little bit about our thinking on that, OE five?
Correct.
So, uh, OE five is, uh, "Learning Environment Treatment of Students," and OE five states that annually, "The board shall assure that the district administrator has established and is maintaining a learning environment that is safe, respectful, and conducive to effective learning." And under that policy statement are two items, and those items say, "Maintain a climate that is characterized by support and encouragement for high student achievement," and then also, another point is assure that all confidential student information is properly used and protected. So, it's very vague. This policy statement is very vague, and in order to really follow the process next month, what I'm suggesting is getting feedback from the board in the form of a survey. So, what I did is I actually went in Google and created a survey, and then just asked you three questions as board members, and basically, it's saying, so, what if we showed it to you would help you, uh, understand that, you know, the work that's going on around climate? What's going on around high student achievement? So, we, we really want your feedback, and then before that, before, in, before the meeting in June, I'll take your feedback, I'll take what I'm thinking, and the administrative team has certainly weighed in on this, and then we'll put that into a monitoring tool, we'll send it out to you, and then that Thursday before the board meeting, we'll have our workshop and be able to chew on it, and then come to the board meeting a month from now and, you know, talk about it, approve it, or, you know, look for expect, or, uh, exceptions. Does that make sense? So, because it, it's a guessing game right now. You know, many of the other policies have about ten bullet points that really outlines the statement, and this one is pretty vague. So, for us, or for me to guess, we really would like your feedback. So, please fill out that survey, and then what will happen is, it's all individuals, so you won't see the work of the rest of the board, but I'll collect that feedback and try to make sense of it into one monitoring tool document.
So, we may be able to find some information online, too, with other schools that have, uh, policies similar.
Yeah.
Because there are mo- other schools post their monitoring reports out there, so we'd be able to look at some monitoring reports and see what, what types of, um, topics that they're listing under the same...
Yeah, so please share, I mean, if you see something really good out there, please share it. So, that's OE five. So, we'll, I guess, we'll look in the table after next month?
People that...
Yeah, you wanna just, Brian's got something to add to that.
One thing, though, before you table, I wanted to share, one thing we are doing around the school environment, I'm gonna pass around, it's a one-page summary. We did apply for a trauma-sensitive schools project at Humke Elementary and at, um, Alexander Middle School. And what it is, it's kinda, 'cause trauma-sensitive schools is something that's been thrown around a lot, and a lot of it is strategies of how we're working with students, talking with students, and we don't want it to seem like another initiative. So, part of this project, what it does, it takes your social-emotional plan, so like at Humke, doing responsive classroom. It looks at your plan and says, how is it set up, and how can we integrate trauma-sensitive practices into what we're doing to be more responsive to students? And the nice thing about this program in applying for it, it's a three-year process, because as we know, any initiative, it's not gonna be done overnight. It takes time, it takes planning, it takes good discussion around how this works. So, in that three years, what they provide is a beginning-of-year training to kinda set your goals with your team of six. What is it you're gonna work on this year? And then the counselors serve as our internal coaches, and they have three to four regional meetings throughout the year. And during that time as well, you have an external coach from DPI that comes into the school and says, okay, where do you need professional development, where do you need help in your planning? So, that way, this all does come together in one system. 'Cause right now, what I notice when I talk with teachers about responsive classroom, restorative justice, trauma-sensitive schools, they see them as three separate silos. And what we want, these all can be combined into one, but it takes planning, it takes work in how we develop it and present it to staff, so they see how all of them are working together. And this would be a process to help that. So, we applied, like I said, at Humke and at the middle school, and the application is due May eighth, and they will get back to us by May twenty-sixth, if we are gonna be included in this project. So, but this is one way we're looking to address some school environment, school culture things that OE five is looking at.
Thank you very much.
Do you guys have any questions about that?
Not right now. Thank you.
Okay, uh, we're gonna move on to GP four, board job description. And, again, you know, this one is, I'll just read the interpretation. "The board's job is represent the community and its students while ensuring that the district demonstrates excellence. The board is to accomplish this through community linkage, linkages, writing policies, monitoring district administrator slash board relation policies, monitoring results policies, and supporting the district's needs outside the community, such as at state and federal levels. In our monitoring process, all board members and district administrator, their contact will be emailed or mailed, and asked to respond with any potential violations, and I believe in a workshop, it was indicated, and indicated there were zero responses received." We, uh, you wanna go over the board job description, Terry, or would you like me to kinda go over it a little?
You want me to read?
You want me to go over more of it?
Sure, or, or I can. Are you saying A through F there?
I guess, are there any questions from the board? That we, I mean, if we all have this document ahead of time?
Mm-hmm.
Feel comfortable with it? We just need to find ourselves in compliance, and Doc, can I ask the roll call, but at this time, I think we're just, all those in favor of finding ourselves in compliance, signify that same thing?
Okay.
Aye.
So, it's not in favor? Good. We had a motion in second, did we? I forgot about that.
Yeah.
I'll make a motion.
I'll make a second.
Thank you. Okay, that brings us to board committees, GP six. Terry, you wanna take that one?
Sure. Uh, "The policy statement of GP six board committees. Committees shall be used infrequently to facilitate the board's work and will not interfere with the board's delegation of authority to the district administrator. Accordingly, board committees shall not direct or advise the staff. Board committees shall assist the board's work by facilitating development of policy alternatives and implications for board consideration. Board committees shall speak or act for the board only when authorized by the whole board to do so. Board committee, committees may not exercise authority over the district administrator or staff. Rather, committee recommendations shall be made to the whole board, and any ensuing direction to the district administrator shall come from the whole board. Board committees shall not be authorized to monitor organizational performance on their respective projects. Such monitoring will generally be done by the whole board or an outside agency." And F, "Board committee, board committees shall be formed only by authorization of the whole board on an ad hoc basis and will di- will disband upon completion of the task." So, all board members and district administrator, uh, were checked and responded with any potential violations. And from my understanding, there's no viol- there was no reports.
Pretty straightforward. Looking for a motion?
One more.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All right. Those not in favor, motion. Now, we're at consent agenda, um, again, with consent agenda, we're taking a lot of these things and, and really looking at, these are things that we've done. Um, I would like to read the donations. Um, is there anything anybody would like to say about, you know, prior to me talking about the donations?
Any questions on resignations, retirements?
Okay, the donations, um, Kay Marcel donated a three-wheel truck to AM, AMS, a backpack for kids, um, a hundred and twenty-five dollars from Sacred Heart Collections, several bags of food from Sacred Heart Church, and twenty dollars anonymous. We thank, thank everybody very much for, for their donations, it's very much appreciated. Um, the other items, uh, previous board minister, report, check that we share, we're included. Um, looking for a motion to, unless, unless you want any further questions on that? Looking for a motion to accept the consent agenda?
I'll make a motion to accept the consent agenda as presented.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, motion passed. Okay, one thing I'd like to talk about, um, we're gonna talk about our future meetings and agenda items, but Doug, Doug wanted me to share, we're gonna be working on the district administrator, um, performance review in June, and there is a document available on Google Docs, or it's being developed at this time.
For, for the board members?
For the board members. Um, this will be shared with the board members? Diana?
Yeah, it's, it's up there right now.
Yeah, it's up there right now, very good.
So, it's a summary eval- summary?
It's a summary evaluation, and, you know, the, I don't know...
You want me to, you want me to...
Yes, would you please cover it?
Yeah. So, one of the pieces to the evaluation for the district administrator now is looking at all the operational expectations, and so Doug created this document or found it someplace, right, Doug?
Mm-hmm.
And so, it, it's titled "District Administrator Performance Management Summit of Evaluation." So, it lists all the operational expectations on here, and then it talks about the date that it was monitored, and then any exceptions that were stated. So, this is kind of a collection of all the policy governance that we've done to this point, and then, so on the back then, uh, is the results policies. So, we really haven't... So we really haven't done an in-depth job of the results, except I added R2, which is academic performance and expectation. Academic performance and expectations. In August of 2016, we did a pretty, we looked at SLOs, school learning objectives, and we had report outs from school data. So I included that in there. We'll do a more thorough job this August, but I thought, you know, it matched up with that results goal.
Mm-hmm.
So this document then, at the bottom of it says, "Based upon the board's prior acceptance of these reports and the ongoing monitoring of the organizations and the district administrator's performance during the preceding year, the board reaches the following conclusions relative to district administrator performance." So this would be where you would be able to write your strengths and weaknesses, um, looking at these policies. So, and then there's another statement here that says, "Based on the foregoing conclusions, the board makes the following decisions for the upcoming year." So you'll want to write notes based, so that when we do come back together in May, actually mid, next week, right?
May 23rd.
May 23rd.
In a week.
In a week. So we'll want to begin to shape this for June when the official work will be done to create my evaluation.
So, uh, board members, this is a tool for us and all of the monitoring reports are online for us to review. So everything that's on this tool is also online that we can review. So the idea would be that next week when we, we come together, everybody will, will have some notes of their own that they'll make and, and any review that you do of past monitoring reports, uh, bring that information in as well. And then our, the idea is the board will meet as a whole and we will discuss the evaluation and prepare one, one concise evaluation.
And we'll get tonight's on there as well. Great.
Thank you very much, gentlemen. Um, we have a drink meeting with the city council, admin team, and board of education on May 18th at 5:30 PM in the community center.
And can I just, real quickly, uh, so last time we were together, we had generated some topics for conversation and one of the topics that the city wanted to talk about was their open space plans and they've been working with the county at that. And so they want to really spend some time talking about that. And so on behalf of the board, I put our topic out there to be an update on REGI, which is a regional economic growth initiative, and I thought it was really a fitting time for, um, Rick to come and share and give an update on that. So should be a real healthy meeting. We're going to have pizza. From, I don't know. Well, we'll take good notes. We'll send pizza. So thank you, Brian.
Very good. Um, we can talk about the May 23rd meeting, June 13th, uh, district administrator evaluation. Um, we have the agenda items out there for the regular meeting, um, for June 20th, review those. Um, if there's concerns, um, or anything that you'd like, you know, to talk about being added, please feel free to contact me. Um, out of which, which you see there, is there anything that you have questions on? Anything that we can note as additions at this time? Okay. Well, I believe we-
Oh, press. I just did one quick update. I just wanted to fit it in quick. Um, I wanted to give you a quick stage update, stage floor update. We're going to be moving forward, getting that scheduled. Um, Bill Seifel has really been doing the lion's share of the work on this and then Steve Hersberg has been involved with them. But, um, they, Bill contacted five flooring and, um, flooring companies, I guess. And the one that came forward that I believe is going to be the recommendation with Lynn and Steve, you know, we'll be making to Lynn and Steve, is with Stalker Flooring. Um, they came in lower by a considerable amount and they can do it now, you know, as far as they can get it into their schedule still. So, so just give you a quick update that hopefully that will be done by the end of the summer would be, you know, but it's, we're, every day ticking away is a little bit closer to not getting that. So we did contact the one that's doing it today. So that's a quick update.
It's a good, in a good time to acknowledge that the, uh, the donation to, it's a wonderful thing that they're doing.
Absolutely. Yes, absolutely.
So we want to recognize them.
And it's exciting that, you know, it was a donation to the, you know, for the NHS music department, but doing it, using it for that stage floor in the Bay, who's very excited about that being used. But that's a way that it really is for the music department, but also the whole community. So, I'm not just saying, I'm not just saying-
What exactly are the, uh, fine, they're doing on the floor?
The back part of the floor, so not the, you know, the, the proscinity? The front part of the stage is the proscinity.
Yes.
I was just, I talked to Dave about it, or I mean, Bill about it last night and, you know, what's going on? Tell me, you know, and so he gave me an update. That little piece out front is because it's hard maple, it's not going to be-
They said that would be fine.
That, that's fine. It's the back part, which is made out of softer pine for material that they're going to work on replacing. What they're going to do is essentially take all of this stuff off, put a new subflooring in there and strengthen it and the stuff up front is just going to be refurbished and reused.
Sort of put a different kind of finish on it there?
Yeah.
It's a different, it's a different solution, but I asked the question too, we're all chiming in on this.
I was just asking, it was called the proscinity.
Did you want to finish?
I can look at it.
But why? Tell, tell why though. I mean, why is it bad? Cause we sanded too much off, right?
Yeah, that's part of what happened.
So is it going to be black again or is it going to be just a clear finish?
Well, I mean, it can be, it's, it will be black, but it could be anything, I mean, paint whatever color you want, but, um, it will, but it will all get a new finish on.
Cause I know before they put the black finish on, it was a clear, so it would look like real old maple wood.
But nobody would go, it would be, the black is, is going to be tinted, yeah. For, you know, for theater production, that black floor. Now there are some floors that we looked at, you could paint and do different things with, but they get into, um, a much higher cost.
Yeah, the, the surface we put on the last time did not last very long. Scuffed up really easy. Uh, you know, I was working on some of the set arrangements, uh, with some of the plays over there and couldn't, couldn't do anything on that floor without scratching the surface out there. And, uh-
Well, hopefully we get a better, yeah, we'll have to ask questions about that. But can I read, um, the donation? You want me to read this little blurb? I think it's fitting.
Yeah.
So Diana wrote this. "Donation to the Nukusa High School Music Department. Thank you to Ethel Furkey, who recently donated $30,000 to be utilized by the music department of Nukusa High School for non-budgeted items. Mrs. Furkey's late husband, Dalton Furkey, and his first wife, Marjorie, had two sons, Dennis and Gary Furkey, who attended Nukusa High School in the late 60s and early 70s. Both boys were active in music and enjoyed the music, the school's musical offerings. All four of these individuals have passed away with Dalton being the last to pass in June of 2014. One of the designated gifting areas Dalton and Ethel had identified was the Nukusa High School Music Department. We sincerely appreciate the generosity of the Furkey family." So they were in and we had a picture taken with them. We took them down and, uh, took them into the auditorium and showed the floor and they agreed, yes, it needs to be replaced, so.
And then the remainder of the money, it's, those are donated funds and they'll be split between instrumental and vocal. Um, and they'll be able to, Bill and M, in this case, will be able to utilize those funds for a variety of different things, um, for their programs. So, yeah, that's the update.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Um, if there is anything else at this point, I call for a motion to adjourn.
Some more. Take a second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All those, we are adjourned. Thank you very much for your time, everybody.